Good evening. We're ready to begin. This planned commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded, as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two and our closed caption for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink can view this program in high definition on channel 1002. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Yes. Chair Schlotman?
Present.
Acting Vice Chair Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Cherry, excused. Commissioner Quinn, excused. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Creer, excused. And Commissioner Tucson. And you do have a court. Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains the rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. The agendas are posted on the half-walls to your left and to your right, and the rules are also posted in that agenda. Moving on to item number four. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be relating to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time, any speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close a public comment. Moving on to item number five. For possible action to approve the final amendments for the planning commission meeting of March 14, 2017, do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting of March 14, 2017.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. There's a vote on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Item six. Are there any items from the planning commission staff or the applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, items 17 through 21, 26 through 28, and 49 are all requested to be obeyed to the May 9th Planning Commission meeting. Items 24 and 25 are requested to be obeyed to the June 13th Planning Commission meeting. And items 22 and 23 are requested to be obeyed to the July 11th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Anyone wanting to be heard in these items, come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and turn this over to Commissioner Moody for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion regarding 17 through 19, 20 and 21, 26 through 28, and 49 is to obey until the May 9th, 2017 meeting, to obey 22 and 23 to the July 11th meeting, and obey 24 and 25 to the June 13, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Moving on to consent, the consent agenda items. Consent items are considered routine by the planning commission and may be enacted upon by one motion. However, any item may be discussed of the commissioner member applicant's desires. Note, these are not required to be written to the record. Does any planning commissioners or members of the public wish to be heard on any of the items seven through nine? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and look to Commissioner Moody for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent items seven through nine.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items seven and eight are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within seven days. Item nine is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to the one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered in the one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the planning commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Starting with relating items.
Mr. Chairman, before you read those items in, because you only have a court of four here today, for the general plan amendments, it requires a supermajority of five affirmative votes in order to pass. So any of those items on the one motion, one vote and the public hearing items that are GPAs will have to go on as a denial for failure to reach a supermajority.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, starting with relating items 10 through 12. Item number 10, GPA 68787, applicant Clark County School District, owner USA, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PROS Park Recreation Open Space to PF Public Facilities at Northwest Corner of Farm Road and Shinsen Street, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item number 11, ZON 68788, for possible action on a request for rezoning from U undeveloped PROS Parks Recreation Open Space, general plan destination to CV Civic, Ward 6, Ross. Staff recommends approval. Item number 12, SDR 68790, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 93,473 square foot public or private school, primary with a waiver to allow a 10-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the east property line where 15 feet is required. Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item number 13, GPA 69188, applicant owner, Ocolo LLC, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from L Low Density Residential to Mixed Use on the north side of Providence Lane and terminus of Portsmouth Way, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 14, TMP 69190, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a one lot commercial subdivision, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 15, SUP 69230, applicant Star Loan Centers, owners 432 East Sahara LLC, for possible action on a special use permit for proposed 2,312 square foot auto title loan use with waivers to allow zero-foot distance separation from residential use where 200 feet is required, and to allow a 959-foot distance separation from a similar use where 1,000 feet is required at 432 East Sahara Avenue, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Item 16, VAC 69194, applicant owner, HV Apartments LLC, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate in 20-foot wide public alleys south of Altidraw between Desert Lane and Martin Luther King Boulevard, Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. I'm sorry. Staff recommends approval. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to Commissioner Moody for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the one motion, one vote portion of tonight's agenda, I move for approval of items 10 through 16.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 10 through 16 will be heard at City Council meeting on May 17, 2017.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing items, starting with item number 29. Waiver 69171, applicant owner, D.R. Horton Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no interior streetlights where such are required for a proposed residential subdivision at the northwest corner of El Campo Grande Avenue and Alpine Ridge Way, Ward 6, Ross. Staff recommends denial. Item 30, waiver 69172, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow private streets to not be developed to public street standards behind the gate, Ward 6, Ross. Staff recommends denial. Item number 31, VAR 69170, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a connectivity ratio of one where 1.3 is required and to allow no amenities zone where such is required for a proposed residential subdivision, Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. VAC 69173, for possible action on a request for petition to vacate US government patent easements on a property located at northwest corner of El Campo Grande Avenue and Alpine Ridge Way, Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. And finally, relating item 33, TMP 69174, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 29-lot, single-family residential subdivision, Ward 6, Ross. Staff recommends denial. Can we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this site was before you in 2016 for approval of a similar residential development. The applicant is requesting to keep the approved RD zoning for the property but change the configuration of the streets and the lots. If approved, the previously approved entitlements will be expunged. As with those requests, staff recommends that complete street standards be implemented along Alpine Ridge Way, that the development provide adequate connectivity, that interior streetlights be provided, and that private streets be developed to public street standards as there are no physical characteristics of the land preventing these standards from being met. Staff therefore recommends denial of the two waivers, the variance, and the tentative map. The existing government patent easements are no longer needed, and staff therefore recommends approval of the vacation request. Note that there were additional protests received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Moody?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My law firm represents D.R. Horton, and therefore I'll be abstaining on items 29 through 33.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Bob Gronhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant and property owner, D.R. Horton. If I could get your attention to the overhead, as staff has mentioned, I stood before this commission back in October of 2016 on the property here that I'm showing you. It's approximately 10 acres of property. You see the property is already zoned today, existing RD zoning. El Campo Grande is to the south, and to the east of us is Alpine Ridge Parkway in this area, and further over to the west is the Beltway itself, 215, as you can see. And then previously to that, prior to the October 2016, I was representing D.R. Horton on the property that I'm showing you here in this flag-shaped piece of property where we were approved for RD zoning for the property itself. As a reminder to this commission, we agreed to do RE lots on the east side of Alpine Ridge, and on the west side, we're going to keep everything RD. But the subsequent application that came in here is for a 29-lot residential subdivision that was approved by this planning commission and also approved by the City Council in November 2016. As a matter of fact, the site plan itself, as I'm showing you here on the eight-and-a-half by 11, this is with the applicable applications that were applied for and that were approved, showed in the subdivision, it was 29 homes. Ingress and egress was proposed to be on El Campo Grande. The waivers and variances that we are requesting tonight are the same exact waivers and variances that have already been approved. As a matter of fact, I do have the City Council, excuse me, I have the notice of final action from the city clerk's office showing you that the waiver to allow private streets to not be developed to public street standards behind the gate was approved in November 2016. The waiver to allow interior streetlights, no interior streetlights where such are required for proposed residential subdivision, was approved on November 2016. And then finally, the variance for the connectivity ratio was also approved in November 17, 2016 by the City Council. The reason why we're before you tonight is because in finalizing some of the plans for D.R. Horton, as you can see, the plan itself, we wanted to reorient the ingress and egress. Instead of having ingress, egress on El Campo Grande in this area here, we wanted to put the ingress, egress out here on Alpine Ridge. We still have 29 lots that were already approved with an existing approval on a tentative map, and because we're coming in with a new site design itself is the reason why we're coming in with the four other applications that are on your agenda. With that being said, just a friendly reminder here, this has been worked out with the neighbors previously back in a year ago or several months ago when we came in to make sure, as you're familiar, in the northwest with respect to some of the requests what the neighbors want, what the neighbors have asked to live in the area without the streetlights and the gated community and all that. So we're doing what is in keeping to our promises of what we've agreed to the neighbors in the previous approvals of what we've received. So, with that being said, I can answer any questions that you might have on any of the items that are before you, but one of the reasons why I didn't get into all the details, I wanted to explain to you that we've been here before with everything that's before you, and we're coming back again. We're just shifting ingress and egress at the end of the day. And actually, one other thing, that we have a vacation on El Campo Grande here, where staff is actually recommending approval for, for the vacation, El Campo Grande. As I showed you on the overhead, El Campo Grande would run right into the Beltway itself, so it's not needed to move going any further to the west. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Gronhour, if I could ask you to step back while other people are talking? Yes?
Randall Harris, 5881 Corte de Casa. I'm the corner lot, right here, is where I'm currently living. I moved out of Seven Hills Capistrano because they're postage-stamped houses, and the crowding is tremendous. We literally call eastern between the 215 and Anthem the Beehive because there's so many people. I moved out of there specifically to get away from that. Fortunately, I was not an owner of the property back in 2016, but I'm currently enjoying all of the dust created by all the development going around there, and I accept development. That's not the issue. The issue I have is, well, honestly, this is the first time I've seen the site plan for the layout, and the entry directly across from my exit means I'm going to be turning left in the morning, going to work against 29 other people. We're going to be trying to go down towards Ann Road to get up onto the 215. So, the other layout actually was better from my perspective here, but I still don't like the fact that I've got a lot more density over on that side. Plus, my house is down five feet from the road bed, and I'm real curious to know if there's no, what do they call it, amenities? What does that mean? Does that mean there's no sidewalks, no setbacks, no walk paths, no greenway that's going to be pushing those houses back? So from my backyard, will I be looking up to a block wall in a two-story house with someone having a view of my backyard? I don't know. Then that's the reason why I'm coming down here tonight. I mean, if they're ranch-style houses like everybody else around us, they're typically single-story, some have one-and-a-half story, but there's a lot of acreage around them, a lot of land around them, and they're set back and away from each other in keeping with the rural restricted development. And I believe I heard that there were objections noted. Three of those objections are mine. I objected to the three mailings that I got, which was on items number 29, 30, and 31. So I ask you to say no to this layout specifically because having entry from that subdivision directly across the street from mine, we have to go up a ramp, top out of the gate, and there's room for, one, maybe two cars to stack up before you have to wait for the gate to open again, and then trying to turn left against everybody coming out of that, plus the buses that come out of the Clark County School District bus facility that's up the street. They're heading right down the street towards the high school. It will be very crowded at that location, very congested, and that's exactly why I left Seven Hills.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing. And Mr. Gronhour, if you need a couple of minutes for rebuttal?
Yeah. There's a few things I want to point out to you is, as I mentioned, about a year plus, maybe up to about two years ago, when we came in on not the property that is before you tonight, but the property that was zoned in this area, and as you can see, is RD zoning. When we were up, as you can see, we surround this piece of property here. One of the things that I do want to point out, and we pointed out in the meeting at the planning commission meeting in the City Council, these lots here, these are the old style development of RNP of two units to the acre. What I do want to point out is the current standard now, you typically build eight homes on five acres, and here you have nine homes on five acres. What is required now, you can see here, is the eight homes on the five acres that is located here. My point is the clarification or the distinction between our property and his. We have larger lots on this side of Alpine Ridge that is being developed in this area that is actually larger than the lots that are located in here. So just for purposes of the gentleman's understanding is, everything on the east side of Alpine Ridge are your truer half-acre lots of the development that is being proposed. On this side of the development that's before you today, we are not increasing the density. The density is the same that's been approved over the last, as I said, since October of 2016. We have 29 homes. 29 homes is allowed to be built here. As a matter of fact, we could build a higher density here in the RD zoning than what we're coming in with. We're about approximately 2.9 units to the acre, plus or minus, and we could build up to, I believe, up to about 3.5 units to the acre to have a higher density. We're not coming in with that, so we're keeping in tune with the character of the area. And one of the things that we've always mentioned is the demarcation line is Alpine Ridge, and on Alpine Ridge, everything between Alpine Ridge and the Beltway itself, the 215, would be more appropriate for the RD type of developments that we are proposing here. So, with that being said, I can answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. I'll turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Just one comment, and then I'll make a motion. This project was approved by the planning commission previously, as well as the City Council. The change that we're seeing tonight presented is changing the exit, egress, ingress, from the development where currently it's to come out on El Campo Grande. The impact of that would be that the people coming out on El Campo Grande would immediately turn left on El Campo, go down 100 yards maybe, then they hang left on Alpine Ridge Way. So they would have a 100 yards or so run at the intersection that we're creating now. The intersection we're creating now would be preferable to having the people that are coming out of that development and turning left and getting a running start at that intersection that's going to be created. So if that's the crux to the opposition, I hope that my feeble attempt at explaining it is satisfactory. So if there's no other comments to be made, I would make a motion on these in regards to item number 29, the waiver 69171. Make a recommendation for approval as presented, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. It's only required a simple majority. Okay. That motion carries.
In regards to waiver 69172, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
In regards to variance 69170, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
The motion carries.
In regards to vacation 69173, make a motion to accept staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
And in regards to the tentative map 69174, make a motion for approval, subject to all
The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 29 through 33 will be heard at City Council on May 17, 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's going to be some confusion going forward as to the number of votes that are going to be required to pass certain items. The GPAs, like I said, since you don't have five members, and five would be the affirmative number to pass a general plan amendment, those would go forward as a denial for failure to reach a supermajority. In those instances where you have four of you or three of you, a simple majority is all going to be required to pass any other item.
Thank you for that clarification. Item number 34, VAR 69410, applicant owner, David Huntington, for possible action on a request for variance to allow nine parking spaces where 30 spaces are required at 517 South Tonopah Drive, Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. And relating item 35, SDR 69411, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the conversion of a single-family residence to a 5,461-square-foot office, medical or dental building, with waivers of the Las Vegas Medical District parking lot screen and street scape requirements, and to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer on a portion of the south and east property lines where eight feet is required, Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Can we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to convert an existing single-family residence and detached garage into a 5,461-square-foot medical office, including a 469-square-foot second-story addition. The use is permitted and encouraged in the Las Vegas Medical District. However, several waivers of the medical district's street scape standards and Title 19 perimeter landscape standards are required, as well as a parking variance made more intense by implementing tandem parking. Specifically, staff supports the waiver to allow an 11-foot-wide landscape setback along Tonopah Drive where 15 feet is required, but cannot support the reduction of landscape buffers on the perimeters, as well as reduction of the landscape setback along Hamilton Lane as it supports the medical district's standards. If allowed to develop as proposed, the sidewalk along Hamilton Lane would not be in the required location and would set a precedent for future redevelopment along Hamilton. Staff therefore recommends denial of both applications. Note that there were additional approvals and protests received after publication.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Member of the Board. My name is Melvin Green, Principal at Kami Architects, 5588 South Fort Apache, Suite 110, 891148. On behalf of the owner and Brooks Behavioral Health Center, I'd like to address a couple of the concerns that staff have. In terms of the, if you look at the overhead, in terms of the landscaping and the street scape, right now there's a 40-foot right-of-way for the property, and if we take another five foot for the 50-foot street scape, then that only allows a small portion of the area for parking. So, in terms of hardship, the property is really narrow. We only have 80 feet going south to north. And if it was developed for other uses, we would still have the same parking problem. So what we've tried to do is to, I talked to the owner, we're trying to eliminate the garage as a office area, thereby reducing the requirements for the parking. So if we were to take the 1,200 square feet away from the total square footage, that means that we will only need 23 parking stalls. So, based on what we have now, we have nine, and in addition, there will be some parking allowed on the street. So we're looking at, seeing if there's a way that we can work it out where we have the nine spaces, a reduction of the square footage. A lot of the clients that will be utilizing this facility do not have transportation. They usually take the bus. There's a bus stop on the corner of Tonopah and Alta Drive as well, and the Behavioral Health Center has a van that would also transport a lot of the clients. So with that regard, we're looking So with that regard, we're looking at seeing if there's a possibility that we can maybe alter the plan, which I have drawn something up that would give us the, a closer step in the right direction. So what I did was, I'm going to flip this for you. What I did was looked at providing a different layout here that shows. This layout here shows where we reduce the tandem parking. We provide landscaping that's required on the east side. We still have an issue with the parking, with the landscaping on the back, but we actually moved the trash enclosure down closer to the east, provided landscaping along the back here. So we only have a section without landscaping of about 24 feet. And the front, the same thing. We have a landscaping here, we have a small sliver here of landscaping. There were some concerns about having a landscaping that was less than one foot. We were actually 18 inches, so we're looking at having ground cover there. We do have a three-foot-high CMU wall as well. So we have a lot of intense landscaping in this area here. So with that in mind, we're open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. This was, as noted, as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll. If anyone else wants to be heard, please come forward at this time as well. Good evening, sir.
Eric King, 2601 Pinto Lane. I'm the Secretary of the Equestrian Estates Neighborhood Association, and our group recommends denial of this application.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the Planning Commission for discussion. Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Chairman. You mentioned that you were talking with the owner about eliminating the area that was going to be office space and not using it?
Yeah, there's a unfinished garage area.
Why don't we just take it down and use the area for parking?
Well, the issue is the expense. He's a young owner. It's his first project he's worked on, so money is an issue for us tearing it down.
Isn't it always?
Absolutely.
And I don't know whether his money problem outweighs the lack of parking, because the lack of parking will go on forever. His money problem will get fixed soon as he gets it rented.
That's something that I would have to take back to the owner.
I think so.
I mean, I can make that decision.
To say that we're considering it just doesn't really get it, this kind of a proceeding. We've got to have something fairly concrete.
Sure.
You know, if you were to show that it's being deleted and you're picking up six more parking spaces, so you're gaining some parking places and at the same time losing the requirements because of the square footage, you're getting real close to making it.
Sure. Again, like I said, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I can't make that decision.
I understand.
Yeah.
So.
I'll go ahead and make a few comments of my own. I appreciate what you're trying to do. You have to understand, items 34 and 35 that are in front of us tonight are very specific with what you are requesting. One a variance, the second a site development plan review. As presented, I can't support it for the same reasons that staff has recommended denial. If you want to come back again on a new application, a modified application, I'll reconsider it then, but as is, I can't support these tonight. Okay? Thanks.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Trowbridge and Commissioner Moody. It's a self-created hardship, and we can't just vote on something based on the financial nature and based on it being someone's first business.
Sure.
And so, but that's state law.
Okay, right.
I mean, so you have to give us justification on what we can do based on what state law allows us to do, and state law doesn't allow us to give you this based on a self-imposed hardship that is your client's first project. So I wish him well, but I wouldn't be able to hold, I wouldn't be able to vote for this if you want to hold this in advance, or if Commissioner Moody wants to, or if we want to just go ahead and vote on this.
So, yeah, knowing that this will go on to City Council after our vote tonight, you have some things you can do between this meeting and that one. So I'm inclined to go ahead and, you know, vote this up or down. So my motion is for, to follow staff's recommendation for denial on item 34.
Thank you. Noting that yes note is for denial. That motion carries.
And item 35, SDR 69-411, my motion is also to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Yes notes for denial. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items will be heard at City Council on May 17th, 2017.
Thank you. Moving on to item 36, VAR 68-235, applicant owner Katrina Nocia, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a zero-foot side and rear yard setback where three feet's required for an existing accessory structure, Class II gazebo, at 6229 Markleham Avenue, Ward 6, raw. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow an existing gazebo that does not meet the minimum setback requirement. This application is the result of a code enforcement case. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary hardship to justify the request has been presented, and staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since the publication.
Thank you. And good evening.
Hello.
Could I get your names and address for the record?
I'm Katrina. I've since got married, so it's Katrina Goodman, 6229 Markleham.
And I'm William Goodman, 6229 Markleham Avenue.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, we request this variance based on the size of the backyard that we have is very small and spaces at a premium. And when I built the kitchen in the back, I'd been to two different companies for estimates and for descriptions and pictures of various designs. And both of the professional companies that we went to sent me sketches of how it was to be laid out. And on both of these professional pictures, they were built right into the corner of the wall, and I wasn't aware that there had to be a setback of any size. Hence is the reason we built it the way we did. Wasn't aware that there was a setback necessary, and based on these two printouts and design sketches, that's why I went ahead and built it the way we did. And it doesn't affect anybody, neighbors, nobody sees, it's all below wall, nobody sees it. It's, I don't see the reason behind the setback. There's no fire issue, there's no danger of four walls falling down. It's just, it's very well-made. And it's, as far as I'm concerned, I don't see the reasoning for a setback. I understand it's code now, which I wasn't aware of at the time. This is why we're applying for the variance.
The pictures that you see in front of you were actually done by a professional company. We took their pictures and basically copied them. And as you can see, they had it butted up against the wall. We didn't realize that we weren't supposed to do that, and we just copied what we saw in front of us. And then we got a letter from the city saying, oops, so now we've got it, and we're not sure what we're supposed to do about it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn this over to the Planning Commission, starting with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you. I do have a question for the applicants. Have you spoken to your neighbors surrounding you?
The neighbors have not come to us at all. The only thing we know is that somebody's come to you. Nobody has approached us. Nobody's knocked on the door. Nobody's spoken to us.
Nobody's complained to us about it.
But you haven't gotten to them to say, hey, or, I mean, no one's here tonight. So that's one plus in your column, but I was, the reason I asked, I wanted to know if you took the affirmative step of going to them, saying?
We have been to the neighbors on the opposite side to us. We have been to the neighbors behind us. We have not been to the neighbors that this is butted against us because of a previous issue. I wasn't going to bring it up. Do you want me to bring it up?
No, no. Tell me if I'm right on this. It looks like, according to the architectural rendering we have, that that gazebo, if you were to extend the wall on the south of your property and bring it through, it would almost divide that gazebo right in half. Is that right? So it looks like, or am I seeing that wrong?
No, that's wrong. It just, it's just butts up against the wall. If you raised the wall, it wouldn't affect it at all.
No, 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 but there's a, the wall on the neighbor to your south, to the south of you.
Yeah.
Where does that wall, where does that dividing wall between the two properties behind you?
Well, if you can see my finger here?
Yeah.
This wall here is the dividing wall to the south.
Oh, it's the same wall?
Yes.
Yeah, it just divides our property and it runs to the front, all the way to the street.
So more or less, this is in the back corners of the other properties behind you.
Yes.
Prior to us building this, there was just an enormous great tree that just threw blossoms everywhere. So we took out the tree and we put a kitchen there. All we did was we.
Just improved the property.
We changed it.
I'm kind of a stickler on these. You know, I'll tell you, the reason for setbacks is to protect properties and views, and there are, you know, some fire safety elements. In this case, I'm not sure I feel that strongly about them. And because of the positioning, because we don't have neighbors here, it's going to be one of those rare occasions where I can support this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trowbridge. You're not on.
I feel compelled to say something. Because there's no height involved here, that would be the biggest issue. But I would caution you against throwing very large parties back there, where you're going to have lots of noise that are going to irritate the neighbors.
No, we don't.
We're old people, where we don't.
I would just make a comment that, I mean, looking at the photos of, not what's on the screen necessarily, but the height of the actual gazebo versus, you know, the height of, you know, the screen wall and the retaining wall, and that this is an enclosed structure where you're actually looking at just something like sheet metal or stucco or something that you can't get out there and maintain. You could actually maintain the structure without getting on to your neighbor's property line, and it's not going to become a nuisance for them. I could, I could probably support this. If there's no other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My motion on item 36, VAR 68-235, is for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
Thank you. Item number 37, VAR 69-126, applicant owner Christopher Alberti, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a seven-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required for an existing accessory structure, Class II detached patio cover at 4686 Dreamcatcher Avenue, Ward 4 Anthony. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow an existing detached patio cover that does not meet the minimum setback requirement. This application is the result of a structure not being built in accordance with the building permit plans. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary hardship to justify the request has been presented, and staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship. Please note that there are additional letters of support since the publication.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Alberti, 4686 Dreamcatcher Avenue, 89129. When we started this process with the two pergolas that we have in our backyard, the one pergola to the north side was thought to be a setback of five feet by the contractor. On January of 2016, we were annexed by the city. We were formerly county, and the county setbacks at that point in time were five feet. When the city annexed us, we went to a 10-foot setback. Unfortunately, the contractor did not know that, and that's Lake View Patios, who's been in business in this town for 30 years. He did not understand that it had changed, thought we were in the county, and that's why this one was built seven feet back. Of course, we were okay with the five-foot setback that we thought we had at that time. When the inspector came out, Mr. David Woods, who was very cordial, very nice, he inspected the holes in the ground, the footings. Once we put the piping in for the structure, he came back and inspected that and signed off on and gave us an okay on it. When we had the complete patio completely done and finished, he came back and told us that we did not comply with the setback. The one that you're looking at right here, the neighbor to the north of us is in full approval. When I talked to Commissioner Anthony's office this morning, they had mentioned that there was only one approval sent back. I have since, today before this meeting, ran around my neighborhood, I have five approvals. If you look at the overhead, the very first one is from the Quick family, which is the only house that this affects. Mr. Quick is a former SWAT team member here in town. He is the only neighbor I really have next to this property. Behind us is a park, to the south of us is the street, and of course, to the west of us, we have neighbors across the street. So this patio only really affects Mr. Quick, our next-door neighbor. They are in full approval of it, as are the five people that I have here. The 15 people we had in our backyard party about a week and a half go to Chris in the backyard, they were all in approval, they were all of our neighbors. So we have not had anybody come up and oppose this at all. So what we're trying to do, obviously, is get our setback to where it is now, at seven feet instead of 10. I would really appreciate if you guys could approve that, and if you don't, I understand.
Thank you, I appreciate that. This is, this was, as noted, as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn this over to the Planning Commission. Yes, Commissioner Tucson.
This is in Ward 4, and you said you have approvals from all of your neighbors?
Yes, ma'am.
And they are in agreement to this. Personally, I don't see a problem with it. I mean, I really don't. I could move to approve this right now.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner, I agree with you due to the same reasons that we spoke about earlier. And please go ahead and make a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Yes, sir.
Please post. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item 38, VAR 69-167, applicant owner Angel Atilio and Cara Sanchez, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a one-foot side yard setback where five feet's required and two-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet's required for an existing addition to a single-family dwelling at 6104 Kimberly Circle, Ward 1, Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial.
Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow an existing addition that does not meet the minimum setback requirement. This application is the result of a code enforcement case. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary hardship to justify the request has been presented, and staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since the publication.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Victor Knight, architect, 9582 Iris Flat Court, 89178, representing the owner, who was also here with us. Due to some family and financial issues that arose, they moved forward with adding on to their residence to make room for those family members. You can see from the layout of the property that with the existing pool and then the triangle that shoots off to the northeast, their really only option was there on the west side of the property. They built unaware of building permit processes, as you will, and the zoning setbacks that would be required, and so they, of course, have gone over both of those to the west, as well as to the. as well as to the north. The property owner to the north is the Las Vegas Valley Water District. It's dirt lot for some 50 feet or so until you get to their actual structure on their side. They actually face a six-foot-high chain link fence with barbed wire on top of that. And then to the west is a neighbor with a six-foot-high CMU while separating that. They are currently about 90% construction at this point. There's floors, walls, roofs, just about everything done but the, moving the furniture in when they were tagged with a notice of violation. And so, that's why we're here, to start the variance process as well as submit for building permits.
Okay, thank you. This was, notice is public here, and anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll go ahead and start. So, they didn't hire an architect and just built in addition to the house without hiring an architect or a general contractor and just did this without building permits?
They have construction experience, so it was built to some level of competence, but they did not have a GC or an architect to begin with.
And you're looking for a one, one-foot side yard setback where five feet is required, and two-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required?
Yes, that is to the eve height, to the eve overhang is the, what the staff recommended we add to the plan, so.
I mean, personally, I, I, I do see this being an odd-shaped lot, but, I mean, this isn't like a lot in the other structures that we've seen, where it's just an open structure. I mean, how, how are they going to get in and maintain the property? How are they going to get in and maintain the walls? Do they have their neighbor's support? Even if they have their neighbor's support, I mean, this is just going to be an area where they're just going to be, you know, it, it's going to be collecting trash and weeds and this and that, so those are some of my questions and concerns, and, I mean, this is, I, I could say, yes, it's irregular-shaped lot, but, I mean, this really is self-imposed, and, I don't know, I'd love to hear from the rest, rest of my commissioners.
Okay, how about me?
Commissioner Moody, please.
So, you know, from time to time, we, and you've seen some here tonight, we get people coming in after, after the fact they've, they've had a visit from code enforcement, they did not pull the building permits, they didn't do it right, and we can make exceptions. My big problem on this one is, it is so close to the wall to the neighbor's property, I, I just don't see how we can, how I can grant a one-foot side yard setback and a two-foot rear yard setback. It's just, it, it's a waste of space. You're right, you know, Mr. Chair, you, you can't even get to and from with, with that small of a, a distance between that and the wall. I, I understand it's the overhang, it's, it's not the wall, but in reality, what, it's two or three feet, maybe?
It's two feet, 10 inches. And there's also the, the rear yard access gate is right there as well, so they would have to access your backyard through that gate and around this addition to get to the rest of the backyard.
Yeah.
So, there would be a path of travel through there that would have to be kept clear for access.
Yeah, I, I don't think I can support this.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you, Chairman. Do you have a letter of approval from the neighbor to the west?
We have four letters of approval that were uploaded to the website there.
I don't know exactly who we have the addresses, but we do know.
Sir, could we please get your name and address for the record?
My name is Brandon Angel, I'm the owner's son, 6104 Kimberly Circle.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? You think about that mic closer to.
Yes. Could you get a little bit closer to one of the mics, to the left or right?
Sorry about that.
No problem.
So, we had, we do have approval from the north and west side of us for our construction. We also have some in the two, front of us, two houses in front of us, and they also approved. We have not received any complaints or anything like that, or anyone that's denying it that is around us. We also kind of have it incurred from other neighbors from around our same street.
We do have the direct west and east neighbors' approval.
Do you happen to know who the, the protest is from that was filed?
No, when we saw the staff report, it was listed as zero protest, so I was surprised to hear that there had been additional or any added to the letter.
Okay. Well, personally, just for me, if I had somebody that built a structure so close to my property line, I mean, I, I mean, it would affect my, my enjoyment of my own property. And to say that, you know, I mean, I was on a project today where somebody asked me to build a gazebo, and it was in the middle of their property, nowhere near property lines, and I, I said, okay, well, let me, I need to go check with the city to see if I need to get a permit on this. But building a whole structure, a building structure without a permit? I mean, who, who thinks that they really can build an entire structure without a permit? And, and encroach onto your neighbor's, neighbor's property? Not encroaching on the neighbor's property, but really, I mean, if this was my house, I wouldn't want a structure that was two foot off of the property line. I mean, if there's greenery, or if there's, you know, if there was vines or something, or if it wasn't so tall, I wouldn't mind, but I wouldn't want this right next to my house. And personally, I just can't support it. I can appreciate the fact of you really didn't understand that you needed a permit and don't understand setbacks, but to think that you can actually go out and do this, and to actually think that any of the neighbors think that this is good, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm just giving you my, my honest opinion. I just can't support this. I don't think it's good planning. So, Commissioner Tucson?
I would make a motion to deny.
Motion's on the floor. Yes, votes for denial. That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 39. VAR 69168, applicant owner Levert and Vincent Pompeia Benefield, revocable living trust for possible action on a request for variance to allow a seven-foot-tall wall fence in the front yard area where maximum five feet with a two-foot solid basis allowed at 1720 Villa de Conde Way, Ward one, Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's proposing to create a front yard courtyard that would be surrounded by a seven-foot wall. Walls located within the front yard setback area are limited to an overall height of five feet, of which only two feet may be a solid wall. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to substantiate the request, staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Hello? Thank you, I appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Levert Pompey Benefield, 1720 Villa de Conde Way.
I'm Vincent Pompey Benefield at 1720 Villa de Conde Way.
Thank you.
We've moved into 1720 Villa de Conde about two years ago. We have been making improvements on the property. We have noticed that there are some neighbors in the area that do have larger or taller walls than the two feet. So, we did proceed to go ahead and make improvements as far as enclosing a patio in the front of our property. We did have a friend come down and actually pull for those permits, and that is when we found out that we had the height requirement. So, we are asking for a variance to proceed to build a property, actually a wall that sits back from the sidewalk of about five feet. We have connected with both of our neighbors. We're very connected with them. We've done everything from putting trees next to each other with their permission, and both of the neighbors to the north and to the south are fine with the addition of the walls.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, this was, notice is public here, and anyone wanting to be heard, please come And anyone in addition to this gentleman, please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Eric King, 2601 Pinto Lane, Secretary of the Queston Estates Neighborhood Association. Our group recommends denial. This application does meet code.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn this over to the plan and commission for discussion and possible action. Starting with Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Chairman. Where else in the neighborhood do they have the seven-foot walls?
On the, okay, we're, Valley View at Oki, on El Cortez, there is a, a wall that just comes right up to the sidewalk around the corner, and then they have a garage door going through the, the door, I mean, through the wall. That really isn't our issue. I mean, that's their, that's what they've done. We're just trying to enclose our front patio so that we can take the bars off of the front wall, off the front door, so that we would just have a gate that's large enough that you just can't look over and use that as a living space off the front of the house. It's set back seven feet. There's a olive tree that's, would be in that front planter that we will plant according to that feeling of the neighborhood. Doesn't affect our view as we back out or pull into it. We're kind of on the curve of the street, so we are asking for a variance.
What is the objection to having the two-foot that you can, it's, it blocks the view, so people aren't going to be able to see what's going on?
In the home, in, in the, in the quarry, you mean?
In the, yes.
Correct. It's, it is for privacy, yes. It's also so that we can take the bars down off of the, off the, get the door, so that we would have, we wouldn't have to have that kind of effect on the front of the house.
So, it's a combination of privacy as well as security, because currently now we have bars on our front doors, and we're hoping to remove those bars and to extend out to put French doors in the front.
Living space, yeah.
And enclose that patio. But again, it sets away from the sidewalk versus right on the sidewalk.
Is the, is the wall there now?
No.
No, no, no.
So, it's open, okay, so it's not another one of these corrective measures?
No, not at all, not at all.
No, we went to pull the permit, and when we found out, we could only have two feet with wrought iron. We could have done that and planted it heavily, but, I mean, it's just a different effect.
I got.
And as you can tell by the rendering in the front, there'll be wrought iron, level or kind of metal that would break up the wall, so it's not all just a solid. The seven-foot part in, is 18, approximately 18 inches of the retaining wall, and then the rest would be, so when you're inside the patio, you're at about five and a half or, and then as you can see, there's wrought iron. The neighbor on the side will have the same wrought iron effect that we have on the front, just to break up the.
And that is something that she has seen, she said that she was okay with as well.
Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, I'm thinking deep and hard about this one. I'm looking at the renderings, I mean, you, you've done a great job on this property. I, I think the, the final product will be really nice. I was going to ask the same question that my fellow commissioner asked, and that is, why do you want to go up two feet higher than you wanted to? And I heard about the, the security issues, and I understand now what you want to do with, with your door to open that up.
That will be an electric gate, I mean, that would be like buzzed in.
You'll see my support on this.
Thank you. And question for staff. For typical codes, two-foot block wall with three feet of screen on top, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Two-foot block wall max with three feet of wrought iron or, or some other open material above that.
An additional question for staff. When, when does that not apply? I mean, because if you move it back a certain amount from the street or a certain setback, then that, that height no longer applies?
Right, we apply that within the front yard setback area.
Okay. So, as long as it's not in the front yard setback area, then you could build something 12-foot tall?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Once you, once you get beyond the setback area and you're in the buildable area of the site, then, then you can build a taller wall.
Okay, thank you. I would tend to agree with what was said earlier. I appreciate y'all coming and trying to get permits beforehand, and, you know, I, looking at the, the map and this area, I mean, I, I've, I've seen other things like this, and I don't think this is, I think this actually has a good look to it, so. Looking for a motion.
I'd be happy to make that.
Thank you.
We are on item 39, is that correct?
That is correct.
VAR 69168, motion is for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at City Council on May 17th, 2017.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I please, if I might, correct the record for item 38?
Please do.
I had announced that that was final action, and that is an error. Item 38 will be heard at City Council on May 17th, 2017.
Thank you.
Through the chair, can I just say I'm glad to hear that, because I, I felt like that was a little too final for, for them, so I'm glad to see that maybe they can make a few changes or reach a compromise, but they'll get a second chance at City Council.
I agree. Thank you. Moving on to item number 40, VAR 69204, applicant owner Jory Apoli, living trust for possible action on a request for variance to allow a 40-foot front yard setback where 50 feet is required for proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling at 3210 Ashby Avenue, Ward one, Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's proposing to convert a portion of the livable space of the residence into a garage, which would also be extended into the front yard setback area, as to provide additional space for vehicular storage. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to substantiate the request, staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship. Please note that there is an additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Marjorie Apoli at 3210 Ashby Avenue, and the reason that I would like to build the garage is that I'm living alone, I'm 70 years old, I've been robbed twice in the last 18 months, and my car has been broken into and stolen. My neighbors want me to build the garage. There's no other, although it's a big piece of property and it's a big house, there's no other place to put it because of the way the house is situated. I, I'm not the builder, and although there was an existing garage when the house was first built, the owner in between the original owner and myself did the conversion, I didn't. So, I find myself frightened to, to leave my house at night and come back and be, and have to walk from my car. I have additional letters from immediate neighbors supporting building the garage, not just not minding it, but actually wanting it for my benefit. I know that they are calling it a self-imposed hardship, but I don't know what I did to impose this hardship. I'm a little confused.
Thank you. This was, notice is public here, and anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And anyone other than these two gentlemen, please come forward.
Andrew Levitt.
Sir, could we please get you to turn on your microphone? Okay, not what you had on, off the non.
Andrew Levitt, 3004 Burton, I thought it approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Eric King, 2601.
Sir, could we, okay, there we go.
Eric King, 2601, Pinto Lane, Secretary of Queston Estates Neighborhood Association. We recommend denial. This does meet code. The reason being, Ashby's probably one of the best streets in the city. It's a really wide right-of-way. If you let someone encroach into that setback, the neighborhood gets chipped away and chipped away. Therefore, we recommend denial.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I'll give you 20 seconds for a rebuttal.
Okay. One of the letters that I have is from a Dr. Avino, who's on the corner. His whole house is 40 feet. The house, two doors down from me, there's an extension. The house, two doors down from me, there's an extension, a car, an overhang, I guess it's called, where the roofline was brought out with pillars, and I believe that's Lynn Wiesner's property. Everybody on Ashby wants me to build this garage. It's not that I'm chipping away. It's really difficult for me at this point. There are police reports which will verify the events that have occurred. I have a letter from a friend who lives in the neighborhood, who, we practiced yoga together on Wednesday evening. She drives me home, she waits until I get into the house, and, you know, it's really a scary situation at this point.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Chairman. I understand your predicament, and I am somewhat familiar with the neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and I think that you will maintain the quality of structure to what you have currently. And I certainly understand your predicament, and I'll be supporting your request.
Thank you. I would have to say, you know, something along similar lines, and, I mean, this is onto the front yard where you're forty foot off of the right-of-way versus backing up to somebody else's property. And, you know, the majority of the houses, this lady's house is set back further than the fifty feet, and the other houses appear to be a lot closer to Ashby. And I know Ashby fairly well, so I wouldn't have a problem supporting this, so could we get a motion?
Thank you.
Can we get your mic on? Thank you.
Sure, do that, too. In regards to item number forty, the variance sixty-nine-two-oh-four, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at City Council on May seventeenth, 2017.
Moving on to item forty-one, VAR six-nine-two-one-five, applicant owner, the Arnold Family Revocable Living Trust for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback on the west and north property lines and zero-foot rear yard setback where ten feet is required for a proposed accessory structure, Class II, CEDA, S-seven-six-four-one, North Jones Boulevard, Ward Six, Ross. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to construct a two-bedroom, two-story accessory structure with a two-car garage and workshop at the rear of an RE zone property. As the guesthouse plans could be redesigned to meet the required setbacks, staff has concluded that the hardship is self-imposed and recommends denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Cyrus Najafi. I'm with Design Group, representing Mr. and Mrs. Arnold.
Do you have an address?
Twenty-one-twenty West Oki Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-zero-four.
Okay, go ahead.
The way the property has been laid in here, the front setback starts at this point. And parallel to this diagram, the rear yard would happen to be here. The required setback for the rear yard is ten, and the way the staff is recommending this is zero rear yard setback, within fact, we are just encroaching to the rear yard setback by three feet. Also, the side yards are ten feet required, we are requesting for five feet. A few years back, the side yard setbacks were five feet, and they would allow you to do fifty percent of your property as an addition. Then they changed that, I'm sorry, the fifty percent of existing residents, it would be that you could add as a substructure. Now, they have come back and changed the zoning to you could do fifty percent addition to your property if you provide ten-foot side yard setbacks. So we are requesting, if this was a few years back, you wouldn't have any issues.
Thank you, sir. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to Plan Commission. Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, through the chair, how about the neighbors? They, any support for this?
Hey, we have not heard any opposition.
You know, I look at the photos of the property. It's a beautiful home, it's well-maintained. I'll be honest with you, your presentation was persuasive to me now that I understand exactly how that's situated and what we're looking at, and especially with respect to that corner, I can support your application. And unless there are any other comments, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please make a motion.
Motion is for approval on item forty-one, VAR six-nine-two-one-five.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to item forty-two, VAR six-nine-two-two-nine, applicant owner, Nathan L. Levitt for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a three-foot side yard setback where five feet is required, and thirteen-foot rear yard setback where fifteen feet is required for an existing addition to a single-family dwelling at three-zero-zero-four Burton Avenue, Ward One, Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a three-foot side yard setback and a thirteen-foot rear yard setback for an existing house addition in an R-one zoning district. There's no impediment with this property to meeting the Title Nineteen setback requirements, and therefore, staff recommends denial. When inspecting the site, staff found that the roof eve on the east side of the addition was encroaching into the setback up to the property line. If approved, the applicant has agreed to alter the eve to conform to the proposed three-foot setback, but if denied, the entire addition must be made to conform to the R-one setbacks. Note that there were additional protests received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Nathaniel Levitt, three-zero-zero-four Burton Avenue. I originally had a garage in the back that was... I had a garage in the back that, it was from the nineteen-sixties, and it was starting to deteriorate and fall apart, and it was starting to cause a safety concern on my part, and I did want to expand this garage so that I could fit vehicles inside of it. I did get some bad advice from the beginning from someone that I hired off of Craigslist, and I think he thought that the setbacks were supposed to be for a detached rather than attached, and so from the beginning, I know that I've gone about this wrong way, but I'm trying to make it right.
And that's the other thing, is on the...
Sir, if you're going to speak, please give your name and address for the record.
Andrew Levitt, three thousand four Burton Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
Eight-nine-one-zero-two. Basically, the same thing. We got pictures of houses in the neighborhood where they're within three foot and up to two foot, and some with zero feet. So just going off of the breezeway, we thought that it was going to be okay for three foot on the right side, and like the gentleman before us, in the back, it was five feet. And we thought, okay, thirteen feet's going to be fine, so just kind of behind the eight ball.
And again, I went around the entire neighborhood, and there was some, you know, hundred-some houses that were under that five-foot setback, and so I just, I printed up twenty pictures that show, I mean, zero lot lines even, so I don't know if that's on the camera or not, but we have less than three feet there. This home has absolutely zero. This home is well under three feet. I mean, this neighborhood was from the sixties. These houses are all... There's another zero lot. We're not speakers, as you can see. Rooflines that just, they go all the way over the fence. I mean, just, and I can just go on and on with these pictures. That's just actually a larger garage.
He just wanted to expand his garage that he already had that he couldn't use, and so we thought we could go with three foot by five foot, and that's why we're here, so.
Okay, thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. By show of hands, can we see everybody here that's wanting to speak on this item? Okay. Please come forward.
Sean Walkman, twenty-nine oh-one Calapee Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-zero-two. I have an additional protest that was received this evening. With regards to this project, it's a little bit more than the applicant is describing. On December twenty-second, I called to inquire as to whether or not the raised walls that were, had been erected met code, and I was informed that code enforcement had already been contacted a couple of days prior to, and been out on the property, and had posted a cease and desist notice because there was neither, there was no permit pulled. And I said, well, he may have received notice, but he's still building. So they actually sent out another code enforcement officer to deliver a second verbal, or a first verbal cease and desist order on the project. And instead of stopping the project, the project was pushed forward full speed through rain, holidays, et cetera, to get it completed. The gentleman had until December twentieth to come into planning and sit down and go through the process. He didn't come in, I think, until, according to the paperwork, December nineteenth. What's interesting to me is that, and I can show you the pictures of the finished project essentially, or what currently exists. Hope I'm putting this up right. This way, twist it.
You can rotate it one hundred and eighty degrees. There you go.
Okay. So this is the backyard view now of the house directly to the east of this structure. Essentially, it looks like they've moved into an industrial park. Unfortunately, the people who own that property, because it is spring break, they had planned holiday, and they are out of town, but I know that they submitted a protest. His concern also has to do with the fact that the electricity that was pulled from the pole in the back is, causes concern. Considering the recent winds that we have, we're lucky that this stood that. Also, with heavy rains that we had, there's no gutters, and the rain just sluices off into his yard. Also, it's interesting to me that in all of the plans that Mr. Levitt submitted, the diagram indicates that this is a garage. The height requirement, we know that max height on our properties is thirty-five feet, however, if you are adding a detached structure, it cannot be any higher than the primary residence. So in the initial plan, this was supposed to be indicated as a garage and detached. Now, when you look at the application, it's described as a single, an extension addition to a single-family dwelling. However, the plans do not show any rooms which would indicate that this is residential in any way, shape, or form.
If I may ask the applicant to take a seat while other people are, while the public's up here giving their comments, thank you.
In so much, if this was in fact a residential addition, one would assume that there would be walls denoting bedroom, living spaces, a bathroom, a closet, something of that, and instead, you have nothing but a broad, open garage structure, as it's repeatedly referred to, in the applicant's own paperwork. Not only that, but two of the three entrances into the structure are in fact garage doors, one of which is tall enough to drive an RV into. There's a slight modification on one of the plans where it's supposed to connect the property to the house, where it would then be deemed a residential addition. Essentially, within that breeze area to build a three-foot, ten-inch mudroom to connect it and therefore make it residential. I believe that may have been in discussion with, saying, okay, the height's too high, but if it was part of the original residence, that's a get-around. So as much as the applicant is saying that, you know, he wants to make this right, his actions denote an attitude completely different to that.
Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate you coming down. We have a couple other microphones, if you don't mind lining up at the microphones.
Mr. Chair, would you like to make those pictures a part of the...
Would you like to make that part of the record, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Roger White, three-zero-zero-nine Burton Avenue, across the street from Mr. Levitt. Good evening. So I'd like to go back to what the gentleman said about Ashby and Mrs. Polly's claim. McNeil Estates is a gem of a neighborhood in Las Vegas. It's the reason that we live there, it's the reason all our neighbors live there. All of us take pride in our homes, and I'm not saying Mr. Levitt doesn't take pride in his home, it's just that it doesn't, his structure does not fit with the tenure of the neighborhood. It's a barn, it's a blimpanger. And what we, the reason I'm here this evening is to try to hold on to, I don't mind modernization, I don't mind change, I embrace it, but I'm trying to also hold on to and protect the tenor of the McNeil Estates neighborhood. So I oppose the addition as it, or the new structure as it currently stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Ed Alvarado, twenty-eight-twelve Gilmary Avenue in McNeil Estates. I'd like to just emphasize the comments of the gentleman before me. McNeil is a very special neighborhood. There's great pride of ownership in the neighborhood and a great sense of community, and a lot of that is based on people who are good neighbors and obey the laws and the codes as they're written. I'm asking that the application be denied and that the property be returned to a conforming state of zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the applicants to come back up. I'll give you a minute or two, if you'd like, to have a rebuttal before we turn this over to the Plan and Commission.
First off, I'm going to absolutely agree. I love my neighborhood. I've been there for nine years now. I'm trying to improve on my property. Yes, the garage is set back from the street, eighty feet. I don't know how anyone can see it except for my neighbors to the east, and when I spoke with them, they seemed to be okay with it, but I guess that that's not the case. But like I said, I'm just, I went off of what all the other homes in my entire neighborhood, in the neighborhood of McNeil. I'm just asking for conformity. I want to be allowed what everyone else in my neighborhood has allowed. If this is denied, then I think everyone else should have to change.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you. Gentlemen, is this a steel structure?
No, this is a wood structure. I used metal siding.
Is that, is your home have metal siding?
Yeah, it's to match my roof. My roofing has been, metal roofing for the last eight years.
The walls, are they, they have the metal siding on your walls?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. Yes, it does. Again, it was to try to match the home that I have now.
And is this a, is this a garage? Or is it a extension of the home? Can't be both.
It's an extension of the home.
Does it have a bathroom?
Does it need a bathroom? I don't know.
I'm asking, does it have a...
No, it doesn't have a bathroom.
Does it have a kitchen?
No.
Thank you.
It's not a garage, it's an expansion to the home that's not attached. Is that correct?
Well, it's attached through the breezeway.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
I just have a couple of comments, and, you know, I build sheet metal homes, so I'm not knocking sheet metal, but, and your house looks great, and the metal roof looks great on your house, but this shop in the back overpowers your house and your neighbor's house. I don't mind the thirteen-foot setback versus the fifteen feet that's required in the rear yard, but we're talking about a three-foot... but we're talking about a three-foot side yard setback where five feet's required. And we can go around and take pictures of every house in, in the city and bring them all before the planning commission, one day that'll happen. But I think when you do something like this and kind of overpowers everything, and especially whenever I've seen the photo from your neighbor's yard, looking at your shop or extension of your house, it kind of made me feel like it was a little bit industrial in nature and wasn't compatible and harmonious with, with the neighborhood. So, for those reasons, I don't, I don't think I could support this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I were the neighbor behind them, looking at that large structure, I don't think I'd be very happy with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I came in tonight, I actually spoke with Commissioner Quinn, who couldn't be here tonight. She's out of state, or out of town. She, she had asked for this to be obeyed because there was so much protest, she was surprised by the protest. I, I noticed that we have 16 protests that have been received after the final agenda was printed. There, so, there is strong opposition. I was inclined to, to ask you to obey this, you know, for 30 days and perhaps meet with the neighbors. I'm not inclined to do that anymore. I do have a question for the director through the chair, and that is whether this is final
This item can be final action or go to city council.
Okay.
And I will announce that once the vote is.
Okay, all right. You know, I, I agree with almost everything I've heard. It is not harmonious or compatible. I, I think it does look like a barn. And I, I can't support it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Trowbridge, please.
Give me one more at bat here. The photograph that I see has a, looks like pallets. Is that, what, what is that? See the brown stuff?
Pallets.
Am I looking, yeah, what is going on there? Is that the finished product?
The front fence just was put up to, so you could work in the backyard.
So it's a temp, it's a temporary security thing?
Yeah, that was a couple of years ago, is to keep my vehicles somewhere secure because there was nowhere to put them. That's.
Oh, that's, that's beautiful wood, that would.
And, and I would also, I'd be willing to change the siding to better fit the neighborhood. I'm just, I'm asking, if, if, whatever needs to be done to not tear the walls down, I'll, I'll stuck with, I'll change it, I just, like financially, to tear that building down will just, that's three years of finance right there.
You know, and looking at previous photos of your property with the lane two shed that you had, I think that was compatible with, you know, with your house. You know, and I think that was compatible with, you know, the overall design of your house and didn't overpower the house. I just think that this is overpowering the house now.
So what would your recommendation be?
I am going to ask somebody for a motion.
Yeah, my, my recommendation is to follow staff's recommendation, which was for denial. And that's my motion. Item 42, VAR 69229.
Here's the motion on, on the table, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Moving on to item number 43, SUP 69217. Applicant owner, Pacific Healthcare III LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed mini storage facility with a waiver to allow storage facilities on the first floor where such is not allowed, and to allow the northeast and south building facades to not appear as an office or retail facility where such is required in the east side of Riley Street, south of Rome Boulevard, Ward 6 Ross. Staff recommends approval. And relating items, 44 and 45, SUP 69218, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 63-foot tall wireless communication facility, Monopalm, Ward 6 Ross. Staff recommends approval. 45, SDR 69219, for possible action on a request for site development plan review for a proposed 278 unit, 72,851 square foot mini storage facility, and a 63-foot tall wireless communication facility, Monopalm, with waivers of the Town Center Development Standards to allow none of the building to be built to the front setback line where such, where a minimum of 80% is required, to allow zero-foot side yard setback where 10, 10 feet's required, and to allow seven-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet's required. Ward 6 Ross, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's proposing a mini storage facility and wireless communications tower. The mini storage facility is located adjacent to the 215 at the southern terminus of Riley Street. As a result, it is not conducive to pedestrian traffic. Mini storage use is therefore appropriate for the area, and staff is supporting a waiver request to allow storage facilities on the first floor. An additional waiver request to allow the building to not appear as an office or retail facility is no longer required as the applicant has provided revised elevations depicting full windows on the exterior facades to simulate an office building. A waiver of the setback requirement along Riley is supported as it would allow continuity with the streetscape that was approved for the convalescent care facility immediately to the north. A waiver of the setback requirement along the southern property line is also supported as it is adjacent to the 215, which is elevated above the site. The wireless communications tower is proposed as a stealth palm tree design at the northeast corner of the site. Condition has been added to require additional palm trees along the eastern edge of the site to help conceal the tower as they mature. Overall, the proposed development is appropriate for the site, it can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff is recommending approval of all applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, 1930 Village Center Circle, representing the applicant. And I guess I would disagree with everything that Mr. Gebicki said. We do back up to the 215 and it is elevated, so I don't know if we can go to the, and look at the picture, but this is our, this is our south property line, so for us to put landscaping there or any of the treatments, it, it's only how, it's only beneficial to the wall, so I don't know that it helps us at all. But we have changed our elevations and, and I think have added faux, added windows to make it look more of a retail facility. We can't really get, we can't meet all of the standards for Town Center because we can't get adjacent to the, to the street because we have the cul-de-sac, so there's a bulge and our building can't push up immediately to the street. So we've done our best, I think, to try to comply with the standards as best as we can, and we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval, and we concur.
Thank you. This was known to suggest a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the planning commission for further action. Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, I liked the project, I like what you've done, it is a unique spot, so you'll see my approval, and I'm prepared to make a motion.
I agree, please do.
Item 43, SUP 69217, move for approval.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Item 44, SUP 69218, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion carries.
And item 45, SDR 69219, motion is also for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, items 43, 44, and 45 are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Item 46, SUP 69210, applicant Canopy Cannabis Dispensary, owner 2113 Investors LLC, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to an improved special use permit, SUP 55264, for a waiver to allow two proposed wall signs on one street frontage which exceed 30 square foot maximum allowed at 1324 South 3rd Street, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends denial. I'm turning this one over to Commissioner Moody, seeing as how I constructed this project and all my business still isn't sort of concluded. However, considering that I constructed this, I'm, will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to take over. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Vice Chairman, the applicant is requesting additional signage for an approved medical marijuana dispensary. Dispensaries are limited by standard special use permit reg, requirement to a single wall sign not to exceed two feet in height and 30 square feet in area per street frontage. Approval of a waiver of this requirement is necessary in this case. The Downtown Design Review Committee reviewed the proposed signage on March 21st and denied it. Staff supports that decision as well as the standard requirement and is recommending denial of this request. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Coody, Moody, I'm sorry.
Haven't been called that since grade school.
Off to a good start tonight. Address is 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, Tony Celeste here on behalf of the applicant, C.W. The property is located along 3rd Street, right where the 4th Street and Las Vegas Boulevard all converge, as you can see from the aerial that I have on display. At one time, this was, consisted of two apartment buildings. The original plan was to graze the property, the apartment building located on the north portion of the site, and to make that a parking lot, and then retrofit or refurbish the existing apartment building on the south portion. Unfortunately, the apartment building was not structurally, the integrity of the structure was, was not sound. As you can see, this is what it looked like, it came collapsing in on itself. So as a result, a brand-new building has been constructed at this location. Let's see, this is the, the building two. The top one is the building that is located on 3rd Street. Actually, the one below it is the same operator that has a building in North Las Vegas. This gives you an idea of the signage that we are requesting for this building. It exists at, at the North Las Vegas site. This building is actually slightly larger, but you can see how this signage would be displayed. The canopy portion is actually about 27 square feet, which would be within code. It's actually the cabinet portion that they call it underneath, where it identifies what the use is, the cannabis dispensary, that pushes us over to about 47 square feet. The locations of the signage are basically to capture the traffic located on 3rd Street and then also on 4th Street and Las Vegas Boulevard. If you've been down in this area, you can see that there's been a lot of improvements in this area, a lot of buildings have been updated, retrofitted, new buildings going in. This building, I think, adds a lot to the area, the signage blends in, and with that, we respectfully request your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 46 has been noticed for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against this item, please come forward, state your name and address.
Mia Rose, 1103 South 6th Street. I just think that the constant, the, the other man mentioned chipping away on a few, few of these back, and the chipping away is between the planning department and our councilman here. This is wrong, that we keep changing rules, variances, and I don't like it. I just think if we keep changing things for specific people, it's just going to make the city in a lesser light. I do not like the billboards as they are, and I always cite, when I send in my postcard, the Palm Springs that does not allow these high buildings and these high, you know, these postings. The sign seems to be okay, but if we let him get away, then what's the next one? And I don't know what he means by, he wants to show the people on 3rd Street. What people are going to be going to the cannabis dispensary from 3rd Street, I don't know. But I just, I just don't like the constant change of the variances and the, and the rules and regulations. I think it's wrong. I think if you keep doing that, and if the, and if the planning commission allows one street to have, like that poor gentleman, the left, that was denied, to have different, everyone's different, and if you don't send a code enforcement out there, then they get away with it. Then the poor guy that gets the code enforcement sent to him, he's the one who has to change. And I just think it's wrong, we need more uniformity. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Shea, Federal Hees Sign Company, 3900 West Dewey Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89118. I'd like to speak on the building and the design of it and the sign, how it fits. If you look at the building on the length of it, the signs fit perfectly with that, North Las Vegas, and the care the customer took on the building and the elevations and picking out the type of lighting on the signs and the material far exceed that neighborhood. And I think you should look at that for approval. The, the zone they're in is really restrictive, we understand this, but I think it fits really well. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak tonight, please come on up to the microphones.
Mike Ganson, 1100 South 6th Street. I like the building, I like the signage, otherwise, if you don't have proper signage, how are you going to sell your product? Needs to be seen on the, on the traffic, and it's appropriate for a retail place. And this town is famous for signage, I think, or it used to be. And I really think that they should really, probably conform to the neon signage, and that's what I find kind of odd, that they're allowed not to have neon signage. I think it should be some kind of cool signage, and it's, it's law, and that's what I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Celeste, looks like you have two in support and one opposing, so I'll give you a very brief response.
Just briefly, unlike maybe some of the earlier matters you heard about code enforcement issues, again, this is one that has not been built, we're coming beforehand, we're not asking for mercy after the fact, we're doing this the right way, this is the proper mechanism with the use permit. We appreciate the, the neighbors that are in support of it, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is now closed, I'll open this for discussion on the planning commission. Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I think that the, the building is an incredible addition to the neighborhood, it's beautiful, good job.
Thank you.
The, the signage does not appear to be inconsistent with the signage down there, actually, it's on the understated side. And so you're going to see my support, I think it's, it's, it's a bonus to the neighborhood.
Commissioner Tucson?
Yes, I, I agree with Commissioner Trowbridge. It's a little girl who grew up downtown, I think this is, this is a real improvement, and I love seeing downtown being approved, and I would vote in support.
Would you like to make a motion?
I will, I'll make a motion of SUP 69, 69210, for support.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 46, please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, that item will be heard at city council on May 17th, 2017.
All right, Mr. Chair, meeting's back to you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 47, SUP 69259, applicant Americana LV LLC, owner WFT NV LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 5,783 square foot restaurant with alcohol use, with a 3,590 square foot outdoor seating area, with a waiver to allow zero-foot distance separation from church, house, house of worship, where 400 feet's required at 2620 Regatta Drive, Suite 118, Ward 4 Anthony. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to replace an existing restaurant with, with service bar use, with a restaurant with alcohol use, within an existing shopping center in Desert Shores. The restaurant with alcohol use allows the applicant to serve alcoholic beverages from a bar area in addition to tables in the restaurant. At issue is the location of the existing synagogue adjacent to the commercial lot where the restaurant is located. A similar request for a supper club was submitted for this location in 2013. is located. A similar request for a supper club was submitted for this location in twenty-thirteen. Staff recommended denial at that time based on the incompatibility of the waiver, and Planning Commission denied the request. No significant changes have occurred in the area to justify a change in staff's recommendation, and the current request would only intensify the use of this location. Therefore, the recommendation is for denial. Note that there were additional approval and protest letters received after publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Jay Brown, five-twenty South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. With me, as you can see, is the applicant, Steve Blandino. As you heard, the applicant is just merely seeking to convert an existing restaurant with service bar to restaurant with alcohol. Each would require the same proximity waiver. As you can see from the menus I've circulated, this is a fine dining restaurant. It isn't the usual supper club. And the existing floor plan has a bar structure and lounge, and the applicant merely wants to, the ability to use that for his present business plan. Staff's recommendation is based on proximity to a religious institution, excuse me. I've spoken with the rabbi of that institution yesterday. He authorized me to convey to you for the record. He has no objections to this application. We would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Stephen Blandino, twenty-eight-twenty Sterling Cove Drive.
Now, just for the record, we have no comments. We'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. If I could ask you all to step back just a bit.
Good evening. Bill Smith, two-six-two-nine Seashore Drive. I am on that picture directly across the lake from that, and I'm opposed to it. I'm also representing residents at seventy-six fifty-six Blue Water, two-six-five-nine Seascape, and two-six-three-three Seashore. Three of the properties are directly on the lake across from that. The word from staff was intensity, intensify. We currently have a great deal of intensity there. We have the Americana. We have the Village Pub. We have Marche Bacchus. We have Bacchus Bistro. And we even have the Desert Shores Clubhouse that is rented out, and Lakeside Center, which is rented out for weddings and other celebratory events. There's a great deal of activity there, and we are opposed to any expansion of that. And liquor license would only create more upheaval and more noise. It, it goes on till past eleven currently, and we just, we have enough of it. We don't need any more. We have enough intensity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And...
I'd just like to respond very briefly.
Please.
We're already there. We already have a restaurant with a service bar. We just wanna have it more convenient for our guests. And as you can see with that type of menu, we're not gonna be having loud, robust noise. And again, we just would ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you.
Sir, we, I can't have talking from the audience. Commissioner Trowbridge.
I don't live too far from this, this neighborhood. As a matter of fact, I walk it and go over the bridge at least five times a week. And the width of the lake there is probably, my guess, three, four hundred feet. I don't know. I've lived there for over thirty years, sir. So I don't see it as anything other than an addition to the neighborhood, and I look forward to its success, and you'll have my support.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Brown, we received the menu. We'll make it part of the record tonight. And I'd like the scallops, the pokey, and crepes for dessert.
I'm still looking at the over-under for ten-thirty.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Tucson.
I, I live in this neighborhood. I am on the Board of Directors of Desert Shores, and this is within walking distance from my house. I don't have any confidence with this. I think this is wonderful. I think we need to support this business. We've had several restaurants in this location that have not been successful. It is a fine dining restaurant. They're not gonna be doing the boogaloo out in the middle of whatever. And I believe that the, this restaurant is farther away than Marche Bacchus, so I don't think being close to the shul, being close to, to the temple is, is a problem. And they have my full support. I think this is a great addition to the community.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. If we could get a motion.
Okay. I, I move to approve sixty-nine-two-fifty-nine.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Trowbridge, could we get a vote? One more time.
It's a yes. Can't get the machine.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item forty-seven is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, item forty-eight, S.U.P. six-nine-three-three-one. Applicant the Mob Museum, owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a two thousand six hundred square foot liquor establishment tavern use with a waiver to allow distance separation of eighty feet from a similar use where one thousand five hundred feet is required at three hundred Stewart Avenue, Ward five Barlow. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, Title nineteen permits a tavern use in the C.V. District with approval of a special use permit as long as the parcel or use is operated or controlled by an agency or subdivision of local, state, or federal government. In this case, the parcel is owned by the City of Las Vegas. There are several taverns within fifteen hundred feet of the subject property. However, per Title nineteen twelve, the distance separation requirement may be waived for taverns that are proposed to be located on a parcel within the C.V. District. This use would contain both a bar area and an accessory liquor distillery. Both the bar lounge area and distillery would be part of an interactive museum exhibit in the basement of the Mob Museum. The applicant also plans limited sales of sealed containers and merchandise as souvenirs, which would be restricted to the bar area. Access to the bar area would be limited and strictly supervised by museum staff. Staff has determined that the addition of this use would not contribute to oversaturation of taverns in the area, as the purpose of the use is in conjunction with the museum. Staff therefore recommends approval of the separation waiver and the special use permit. Note that there were additional approvals received after publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Chris Kemfer here on behalf of the Mob Museum. With me is Jonathan Olman. Jonathan is the Executive Director and the Chief Executive Officer of the Mob Museum. I am proud to say that I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Mob Museum, and that's the purpose for my appearance tonight. And that a little bit of this is gonna sound kind of like a Mob Museum advertisement. I want you to just bear with me, because under his guidance and direction, there have been some amazing things that have happened at the Mob Museum over the years, especially in the last couple of years. In twenty seventeen, we received accreditation from the American Alliance of Museums, the highest national recognition afforded to museums. Only one in thirty-five museums in the country achieved this status. We were ranked as the number nineteen museum in the United States in the twenty sixteen TripAdvisor Best Museums in the United States. There was twenty sixteen Preservation Education Award for investigating the History Educational Outreach Program, serving Clark County students, the City of Las Vegas Historic Preservation Committee. Additionally, in twenty sixteen, we received the Las Vegas Review Journal Best Museum, the twenty sixteen Nevada Magazine Best Museum, the twenty sixteen Desert Companion Magazine Best Museum, and the twenty sixteen Southern Nevada Hotel Concierge Association Best Exhibit Museum. Now, that did sound like a little bit of an advertisement for the Mob Museum. The reason that I said all that is you should be very proud. Everybody who works, lives in the City of Las Vegas should be very proud of a museum that has achieved such national recognition. Obviously, there were some naysayers in the beginning, but I think everybody has come to realize that this is a real benefit. And by the way, economically, just so you would know this, an economic impact study was completed by applied analysis, and they revealed that our operation resulted in over twenty million dollars of economic impact in downtown Las Vegas in an one-year, annually, twenty million dollars. In twenty sixteen, over three hundred and fifty-five thousand people visited our museum. More than two-thirds traveled from the strip or locations outside downtown to come to downtown, and the statistics show that forty-seven percent of those visitors dined and then ended up staying and utilizing other things in the City of Las Vegas. So it's been a real jewel for us. Now, what we're doing here is kind of a natural extension of the Mob Museum to have the speakeasy and the distillery portion of it. In fact, it's actually gonna be a real speakeasy. We're gonna have a hole in the door, and you've gotta be announced, and we open and let you in. It's, it's, it really is gonna be wonderful. So we very much appreciate staff reports. We've worked with the Fremont Street Experience and with Mr. Ryan, Ryan Arnold, who I know is in the audience today. And there are certain conditions that they have asked that we put on our application, and we have no problems with that at all. Packaged liquor sold on museum property will be limited to museum branded souvenir items. That's condition one. Condition two, all packaged liquor sold to individuals for off-premise use will be placed in a bag with a receipt stapled to the side. That's the way it's done now. If you buy something on, on Fremont Street Experience, you have to keep it in a bag and staple it. A sign will be posted stating that packaged liquor is not to be consumed on Fremont Street, which is important to the Fremont Street Experience, obviously. Alcoholic beverages will not be poured into open containers for consumption outside of museum property. In other words, if somebody has a drink on premise and they say, hey, can I take that off? The answer is no. You can't take that particular open cup or container and take it off our property, and there will be no gaming on the property. So those conditions are acceptable to us. We have shared them with your staff, and they have no issues with them at all. So we would respectfully ask for your approval of our application, subject to staff conditions and also subject to the conditions as requested by Fremont Street Experience.
Thank you.
And again, I'm sorry for the non-paid advertisement for the Mob Museum, but I am very proud of what it has done.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. We have several microphones, so I encourage anyone who wants to be heard to come forward right now. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mike Ganson, eleven hundred South Sixth Street. I live downtown, and our neighborhood is affected by single sales. Not that there's any kind of difference between people who buy singles or not. I think the precedent here of allowing more singles to be sold downtown, since we've already experienced the problem of Fremont Street and the single sales there, and what that costs. Not that they're gonna be real, a real contributory to the situation down there. I just think we should set a precedent there and allow just on-sale, as we call it in California, on-sale consumption. And if you want a beer or something, buy it by your neighborhood grocery or Seven-Eleven on your way home or at the gas stations here, I guess they sell them. But I think the idea that we're continuing to promote single sales of off-sales is not a good, is not good for the community. And I'm all for them having as many drinks as they want there. That's fine. But taking beers or whatever that they're gonna be selling there, and it'll turn into those forty-ouncers that we see all over the streets. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn, turn this over to the Planning Commission. I'll go ahead and start and just state that one of the conditions is that there's not gonna be in single cells or anything allowed to be taken off-site, with the exception of any kind of packaged liquor sold in souvenir format. So the Mad Dog and the Twenty-Twenty and the malt liquors and all that good stuff is not gonna be rolling off-site. I don't really have a problem with this. I might ask staff if they have any problem with the conditions or if they wanna craft it any differently. You don't have to answer that, but you might start thinking about that while we go ahead and go down to Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you. The, the alcohol sales are gonna be essentially souvenir in nature, so you're not gonna have people paying the extra money for a souvenir and then drinking it like a, a beer. The only portion that was left out of your non-commercial message, of course, was the hours of operation.
Yes. The hours of operation, right now end at seven?
No, currently nine to nine.
Nine to nine. Currently nine to nine.
Commissioner Moody.
If I could reiterate what you said and what Commissioner Trowbridge said, and so to make that gentleman feel a little bit better, that's exactly the only thing we sell, would be some souvenir branded kind of Mob Museum. If you're gonna drink on Fremont Street in something that you shouldn't be taking down there, it's not gonna be something you paid the price that we're gonna ask for souvenir liquor, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Moody.
So Mr. Olman and I went through the FBI Citizens Academy together about four or five years ago, and we had a wonderful event there. And Las Vegas is proud of the Mob Museum. You're doing a great job there. You'll see my support. I won't make it a condition of my approval, but I would like to see root beer served at the speakeasy.
I could probably go with that and a scoop of ice cream on top of it.
Commissioner Tucson.
No, I think this is wonderful. I really do. The Mob Museum is a great asset to Las Vegas, and I agree with what everyone has said, is you're gonna spend that kind of money on a souvenir. You're gonna take it home and put it on your counter or put it on your bar. You're not gonna drink it on Fremont Street.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, please.
Is that what the, subject to the added conditions?
Yes. Yes.
That's written to the record by the, by the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, through you, and just for the record, I'll reread those. Packaged liquor sold on museum property will be limited to museum branded souvenir items. All packaged liquor sold to individuals for off-premise use will be, will be placed in a bag with a receipt stapled to the side. A sign will be posted on museum property stating that packaged liquor is not to be consumed on Fremont Street. Alcoholic beverages will not be poured into open containers for consumption outside of museum property, and no gaming is to be operated from the museum property.
Thank you for that. And the applicant agrees with all those conditions?
Yes, sir, we do.
And Commissioner Tucson, that is added to your motion.
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you. Motion's on the floor with the additional conditions. That motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, item forty-eight is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within ten days.
Moving on to item number fifty, S.D.R. six-nine-two-two-five. Applicant owner, Avante LV Six Street LLC, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed twenty-story mixed-use development containing two-hundred-and-ninety-five multifamily residential units and twenty-four thousand eight hundred square feet of commercial space with a waiver of the Downtown Centennial Plan architectural standards at the northwest corner of, of Hoover Avenue and Sixth Street, Ward three coffin. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a mixed-use project consisting of a twenty-story, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall tower with ground-level commercial uses, five levels of parking and residential use, units above. The proposed use is appropriate for the area. However, the design of the building does not meet the requirements of the Downtown Centennial Plan architectural standards. The north and west elevations have blank expressionless facades where the standards require that the main architectural features be carried around all sides of the building. Although the north and west facades do not face the Hoover or Sixth Street rights-of-way, they will be visible over the surrounding existing development that is generally one to two stories in height. Staff does not support the request of waiver and is recommending, recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Schlotman and Commissioners. I'm Greg Borgel, three hundred South Fourth Street. Here with me is Kristen Goodell, who is the architect on the project. We understand, having been here before, that staff sometimes have difficulties with variances and waivers. We also, however, would point out that the project has been almost universally received at every level with favorable comments. You have, if we can go to the overhead, you'll have a perspective view of the property. There we go. Get the microphone out of the way. Might even be better. That principally shows the Hoover and Sixth Street, Street frontages involved. But the comments, even in your staff report, are that the objectives of the Downtown Centennial Plan are incorporated into the design of the proposed mixed-use development, and the featuring of micro-units will fill a niche in the area. Further on the findings, the mixed-use development is appropriate to this area of downtown, consistent with the general plan, conform- downtown, consistent with the general plan, conforms to most of the requirements of the Downtown South District, and access is not expected to negatively affect traffic in the area, which leaves us with the staff's just explained concern, which is principally with the north, as expressed in the staff report, with the north face of the building, which they describe as featureless, flat, and painted. We think that's unreasonably harsh analysis. I might add, that came up after our initial submission of the application, which staff was quite enthusiastic about the design, but a very literal interpretation of being required to carry, and I'm going to move this briefly, to carry the look of the front around to the back, in the end, staff felt, in a subjective judgment they can certainly make, that this did not sufficiently do that. This is an enhanced version of what staff first looked at. It is, however, a version that they analyzed and still did not support. And I think we would perhaps disagree in two ways. First, on the question of, does this fairly reflect bringing the overall appearance of the building around to the rear? I think it does. And again, just perhaps side by side will give some impression here of what's going on. And secondly, with regard to the comment that it's featureless and flat, it is neither featureless nor flat. It is featured in, you know, some people are and some people aren't fans of abstract impressionism, but that's the nature of this presentation. And if this were reduced to a canvas and it were hanging in a gallery of Rothko or McLaughlin or any number of abstract expressionist painters, this would fit right in. So, we think it's attractive. More importantly, it is not featureless. For example, these features are not just painted features. They are recessed, which will create a shadow effect as the day goes by. So, we think that the words of the analysis here, that it's a featureless, flat surface, is simply not true. And further, we think that this is attractive. It happens to be in a location, I'll get to look at it and I'll be pleased to look at it. And we would like to see it evaluated in that way. In other words, is this an attractive building side, or rear in this instance, but a side of the building, a face of the building, or is it not? And the fact that it doesn't exactly match the front of the building, which it can never match, because the front of the building is where the mixed use takes place, and obviously on the rear of the building, there's no opportunity for that, really shouldn't be quite so strongly held against it as staff makes out. So, we would hope that you would find this attractive and frankly, in the spirit of the architecture of the building, and approve it on that basis. I will tell you that we've heard comments that we could do more of this, more of the, call it detail work, more of the carving out on the face of the building to create more three-dimensional texture and more shadowing. And the answer is, yes, we can. We experimented with a number of those. If that's the direction you want to go, we'd be pleased to hear it. And not something that we're likely to object to. We've done several versions of it ourselves. This is the one we settled on. We think it's clean. And architecturally, it's not random. This has been thought out as an art project. In other words, the vertical lines here are continuous through the property, up and down. The horizontal lines match. It's a thoughtful presentation, but if you were to say you want more of this or you wanted window appearances here, we've done examples of all of that. We settled on this, but we're not immune to comments that you might feel differently. But our proposal is this, and we're prepared to defend it, we're also prepared to receive any input you have and proceed from there.
Thank you. This was a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening again. Oh, my God. Mike Ganson, 1100 South Sixth. I live within 1,000 feet of the building and I can see it quite, well, I would see it quite well from my front yard. I think we already have three kind of mundane structures. I'm glad Mr. Cherry's not down here tonight, because he's responsible for a couple of them. We've got what I call the dorms, which is somebody buy a bucket of paint for the Ogden. I mean, I mean, what color is it? You know, put some character to the building. This one here is, you know, it's not attractive. It doesn't invite me in there, very little landscaping, and it's to me a rather inexpensive structure. You know, I know they have to be fiscally responsible, but the idea of looking at another parking garage and a Eiffel-sited building, not that it needs to be precast or stone, but the idea is, is that we should have a little bit of architecture in this town, which it's famous for. And I really don't think that this type of structure, even though we've got three of them in town already, I guess it fits in the neighborhood, who knows? But I wish that they would come up with a little bit better idea to invite the public in, a little bit further setback, some more plantings, and have some kind of inviting instead of just hang your hat here. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. See you none. I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action. I'd like to go ahead and make just a few comments and then we'll turn it over. You know, I had the chance to talk to Commissioner Cherry at one point and he said, he said people either love or hate Soho Lofts and, you know, and it, you know, is a little bit expressionless at the bottom of Soho. You know, Newport, you know, with the trellis that they put over the top and some of the relief that they put in with the balconies. I personally like the design of Newport a little bit better, just due to the relief. I wouldn't agree that, you know, the side of this building should belong in a museum, but overall, I do like the three-dimensional or 3D rendering that you prepared showing the relief. It's not just some big square box with no balconies and nothing else protruding off of it. We look at the city hall parking garage and, you know, they put up some cement and incorporated different components into it to make it look nice. And, you know, we look at other parking garages that are on the Strip where it's just a parking garage going up and, you know, it's open. Even if you look at the resort world, I mean, it's a pretty bare parking structure. So, I would prefer to see it enclosed versus having an open parking structure. You know, I think you did a really good job from, you know, Sixth and Hoover. The other sides could have used some improvement, but overall, and I'm not saying I'm settling for anything, because I really do like the look, and I hate to keep using the same term, but relief within this building. But we really do need residential and this is a lot more appropriate area for this than some of the other places that we approved previously. So, you'd see my support on this. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you. Am I correct in assuming that behind the north wall is where the parking is?
Yes, on this side, the parking is behind the wall. Yes, sir.
Will be enclosed parking.
Yes, sir.
While I'm neither an architect nor an artist, I still think it's a fairly attractive building, will be a nice addition to downtown. You'll see my support on it, too. No other comments?
Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm just excited to see building downtown. I'm just excited to see it grow and flourish and come into the 21st century, so to speak. So, you have my approval on this, too.
Thank you. And I know that we're starting to see more and more of these coming back. Hopefully, we don't have, you know, a pipe dream of 20 of these sitting out there and none of them getting built, so hopefully, somebody will actually do something with their project. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Before I make the motion, I would make the comment that this project also does meet the landscaping requirements. And so, in regards to item number 50, Site Development Review, 69225, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at City Council on May 17th, 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and good evening.
Moving on to director's business, item number 51, TXT 69603, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 19.12 permissible uses and 19.18 definitions and measures to amend marijuana establishments, medical marijuana dispensary, medical marijuana production facility, and medical marijuana cultivation facility to allow dual medical marijuana and marijuana and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendations. Before we begin, just want to go ahead and make a disclosure that I have built several medical marijuana establishments throughout the county and the city of North Las Vegas and only one of them has been in the city of Las Vegas. And I currently do not have anything under contract in the city of Las Vegas and all my businesses has concluded. So, therefore, this will have no greater or lesser effect on me and my independence judgment will not be affected.
And Mr. Chairman, you've made those disclosures to the city attorney's office and we've advised you that you are able to vote on these items. Thank you. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this amendment provides revised definitions for marijuana uses that will proactively address the approval of question two in the Nevada general election of 2016, which legalized the recreational use of marijuana. This amendment will accomplish the following. It creates one land use category for each of the following: marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana dispensaries, marijuana production facilities. It revises the description of the uses to include both medical and retail marijuana uses. It revises the minimum distance separation requirements to be in conformance of Nevada revised statutes by adding the 300-foot separation requirement for a business that primarily provides recreational opportunities or services to children or adolescents. And it eliminates the Downtown Design Review Committee review of building elevations and signage for dispensaries.
Thank you. This was no discuss public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward. See you none. I'll close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission for further discussion.
Seeing no other, any people with questions in regards to item 51, text amendment 69603, make a recommendation for approval as presented.
Motion's on the floor. Please catch your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of time that any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Good evening, sir.
Good evening again. I'm Mike Ganson, 1100 South Sixth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. I would like to speak just briefly about historic preservation and the overlay districts that are in play right now. I think they have the Beverly Green area. They had one meeting there and I think 10 people showed up for that meeting and they're all for this overlay district. And I live in the John S. Park Historic Designation and that was totally erroneously portrayed as being the neighborhood in favor for it. I had presented at the hearing for that, over 103 homes out of the 160 homes were against that historic designation and we've had nothing but problems and blight. And it turns out, the historic preservation actually ends up blighting our neighborhood. And we want to save the character of the neighborhood, but we really can't work in the neighborhood in the democratic sense. They have these autocratic tyrants that are running the preservation with the city and this has got to stop because it's ruining my neighborhood. And I would like to have some sort of authorization, if you're going to entertain this kind of zoning, that we have a signed approval by the stakeholder, the homeowner, that they're willing to give up their property rights for something. We got nothing at John S. Park. Usually, of all the other historic areas that I researched in the United States, this is the only one that came without amenities or entitlements. And that's alone is devalued, you know, you're supposed to trade historic designation for entitlements. We got nothing. And I think the preservationists abused our neighborhood and held us hostage there, where we can't do with what we feel is having a non-conforming property. We should be let loose of their chains. You know, and these people tell us what we can and what we can't do with our property. I don't think anyone up here on the board would like that without, you know, giving up your right to take care of your home. And yet, they do what they do on their own and I don't think it's in the American way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. There's a few microphones. If anyone else wants to be heard, please come forward.
Mia Rose, 1103 South Sixth Street. I agree with what Mike's saying and I believe it is totally unfair to communities, especially people who really take care of their homes. They have the historic district, like where Jimmy the Greek lived and, I mean, and go all the way down and different casino owners and that's wonderful. But then, they allow without, unless you call code enforcement, they allow the neighbors, the grass is growing. Even one of our attorneys in this area, his grass was up, I had to tell him, it's just, it's not really a nice historic district if we don't have some kind of rules or regulations to control it then. There's no, it's not an HOA. It's not that I want an HOA, but I mean, if you keep up your home and you want it to look nice and then they say it's a historic district and you can't do this, you can't do that, and yet they let dilapidated homes go. There's one right now on the corner of Franklin and Sixth that has, where the tree fell over and I called code enforcement. All they did was move it off the street on the sidewalk. Then I had to call again, they took it off the sidewalk. It's laying in front of the home. The home is totally dilapidated, there's squatters living in it. I don't know how they can consider this historic district and allow that, and yet if you want to, like, raise your wall a block or put a glass block up to make it look nice, they won't let you. It's a mishmash. We need some conformity on that. We need something to work. Otherwise, we need to just forget about calling it a historic district. It's not right and it's bringing our property values down. It's holding us hostage. The man next door that purchased a house, he's doing a really good job of fixing it up, but his hands were tied for a month because they didn't like the way he was fixing the roof. I mean, it doesn't make sense and then to allow something to be dilapidated two doors down from him? So, it's just wrong. It's ruining our neighborhood. We have to stop the historic district. I don't know who started it, but when they started it, they should have put a plan in place that would give us amenities or give us help, but they're not. It's a hodgepodge right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. See you none. This meeting is adjourned.